Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the September 27th, 2021 Regular School Board Meeting, Business Meeting to Order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Ms. Amy Gibson-Holman?
Here.
Ms. Birchmal?
Here.
Ms. Crawford?
Here.
Ms. Turpin?
Here.
Ms. Wallace?
Here.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Fitzsimmons and Mr. Paree that they will lead us in our belief statements and pledge of allegiance.
I'll begin with the belief statement. We believe that every student has the right to an excellent education in a safe, experiential, and imaginative learning environment. We believe that every student deserves equitable opportunities to learn, grow, lead, and serve. We believe that an intentional focus on future-ready skills and dispositions integrated with essential academic learning, sorry, academic knowledge develops an empowered 21st-century graduate. We believe that mental, emotional, and physical health are essential conditions for optimal learning. We believe that collective efficacy and shared accountability are vital ingredients to productive, empowered workforce. We believe that Winchester Public Schools must be learner-centered, agile, and courageous in modeling the power of public education across our Commonwealth, country, and world. We believe that a vibrant public education system positively impacts the social, economic, and civic well-being of Winchester. We believe that embracing the diversity of our students, their families, and our community is a strength that unifies us. We believe that to achieve equity, we must clearly define and monitor the extent to which all learners in groups are empowered through access, diversity, and inclusion.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Next, we have here Chairman's Comments. I have no comments for this evening. As you probably have already noticed, our superintendent could not be here this evening, but we do have Dr. Joyner, and I will give Dr. Joyner an opportunity to make any comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good evening and welcome. Those comments this evening, except one, and that is to say, we are so pleased to have so many folks here from Virginia Avenue Charlotte de Hart here, and your showcase coming up, so welcome, so glad to have you here, and we can't wait to hear about all the good things that are going on at Virginia Avenue. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. And next, I'll open the floor for any board member comments, and what I'll do is I'll start from the end and go all the way around. Mr. Birchmal? Dr. Pierce Gonzalez?
I also just wanted to echo how excited I am to see the VACDES family here tonight and to witness their presentation. In addition, we were welcomed by Frederick Douglass and Garland Quarles Elementary Schools this week, and I think it was Mike and I said to each other something that we usually say to each other when we see each other on these visits, is like, that's the best part of this, what we do, is seeing the students in action during the school day, and so I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to those two schools for letting us come.
All right, thank you. Ms. Holman?
I too was able to go to Frederick Douglass and Quarles Elementary, and it was great to, it was great to feel the energy in the schools and to see the children. It's been a long time coming. I am grateful to those schools, as well as all of the schools and the teachers, that made it possible for us to get all of our kids back in school, and to the parents as well for allowing your children to return. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Turpin? Mr. Wallace? Ms. Crawford? All right, thank you. That moves us now to our student representatives. Open the floor for you guys to be able to make any comments and address the board and the public. Thank you.
Yeah, I just think, I think I've said this before in the last meeting, but I'm very happy the way this school year has opened up, thanks to the hard work of our teachers. School is really feeling like it's going back to normal. Clubs are mostly back up and running. We have upcoming Spirit Days at Hanley, and homecoming is only two weeks away. So, a huge thank you to all the teachers who have made this happen. Thanks.
Kind of to echo Neil and the rest of the board on this, I think the energy in the school is amazing, and we are all so fortunate, the teachers and the students, to have the opportunity to participate in the school activities, and, for example, the School Musical, which has amazing participation, and the rehearsals are fun and exciting and energizing. So, once again, we are just thankful to everyone who was able to make this happen.
Thank you. All right, that moves us to item number two on our agenda. This evening, we have recognitions, which is really, you'll see, we have Virginia Avenue Showcase, which is really one of the board's favorite parts of our meetings, where we're able to hear what our students are doing in individual schools, and really, they can showcase the things that they're doing in their school, and just really be able to connect to parents and the community in a meaningful way. And up we'll have Ms. Bryant. Dr. Bryant?
Yes, yay. Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Joyner, and the members of the Winchester School Board. I am always proud to represent Virginia Avenue Charlotte de Hart and to showcase all the amazing work going on in our school community. This evening, we would like to, we would like to showcase our global ed, dual-language, and empowered learning school. We're going to begin with a video, and then we will be bringing in our students. So, I don't know if you can see the video from where you're sitting, but I do invite you, board members, to come around when that's over, so that you can see the faces of the children when they sing and they dance for you. So, if we could mystically, let's begin with the video. It's a nice introduction. At Virginia Avenue Charlotte de Hart, we are committed to empowered learning for students, staff, families. At Virginia Avenue Charlotte de Hart, we believe that empowered learning fosters a thriving, successful, and healthy community. I just wanted to say anecdotally that I was talking to a teacher the other day, and she said, you know, setting up empowered learning and project-based learning, that takes a lot of time upfront, but at the end of the unit, the kids really have it. They know it, they know the content, and they know it deeply. So, we're excited about our learning, and especially our empowered learning at Virginia Avenue Charlotte de Hart. And so now, I would like to invite our empowered learners to come in, and invite school board members, if you would like, to come around this way. So, this is, these are some second grade and fourth graders from Virginia Avenue Charlotte de Hart Elementary School. We're going to talk about two things. The first thing I'm going to do is a dance led by a student, and he's going to tell you all about that. And then we're going to sing a song for you. So, this is dedicated to you, you can set up with this dance, and you will be ready to start.
All right, so third and fourth grade are going to be performing a dance called the Sneakling Dance. And this dance is originally from Philippines. The dance was made up because of birds, called the sneaking birds in Philippines. They would move with such speed and grace through the forest, they would jump and leap over branches, and they would escape the bamboo traps that by a rifle. So, today, we have a few kids who are going to perform that dance with us. Very short, but we worked pretty hard on it, so please just be patient with us, and yeah, here we go. Emmy, Kayla, and Esther. All right. We're going to do two different routines. Okay, we'll do our first routine first. This name? We'll do the number one, one, two, three first, okay? We'll do a big time, okay? All right, so that was the first routine. Ready, set, go. And, ah, good job, girl. Take a bow, girl. Uh, let's see here. Deli? Nico? Yes. Deli? Um, Deli? Yep, yep.
Come on, girlfriend.
Yep, perfect, yep, yep, yep. All right, girls, ready? Season number one first, one, two, three. Ready, go. One, two, three, go. More? Nice job, girl. Addison?
Someone come and work on the round one.
Everyone win?
I did it.
I did it.
Delaney, where are you, Delaney? All right. All right, ready, go. All right, ready? All right, one more. All right, ready, and go. And, good job, good job, girl. So, that was to sneakling by our third and fourth grade students. All right. And then also with our second graders, we, and first graders, we have been working on a dance called Parave Tapatio. It is a Mexican folk dance. It's better known internationally as the Mexican Hat Dance. It's a dance that shows unity, it brings people together, so we have put a little twist to it, a little kid-friendly version for us here, for our version of the Mexican Hat Dance. So, second graders, going up? Yeah? Perfect, let's take a circle. I'm taking a circle. So, four hands right here, and then four, and two, spinning, walking circle, okay? You guys ready? All right. You have a problem, you can hit me. You guys ready? Wait for me, guys. Ready? All right, yes. Ready, and go. Ready, go. And go. All right, go, go, go. All right, go. And stop. There we go, that's ready. And, go. One, two, three. Go. One, two, three. Go. One, two, three. All right, one more time. Go. One, two, three. And stop. Come around, ready? And go. Go. Nice job, guys. Awesome. That was wonderful. So, now we're going to sing a song for you. I think it's more important than ever for us to empower our students to dream big and have high hopes for the future. And that is exactly what this song is about. It's called "We Won't Stop Dreaming." You guys ready?
Yeah.
Take a quick breath in.
I have.
Remember how good we sound? Here we go. Here we are, living in the moment. Here we are, here in the ocean. But we're out in a different new day. Making moves, doing things that do well, a new way. This is our world, this is our time, these are our plans, let our light shine. This is our place in the human race, and we won't stop dreaming, no we won't stop dreaming. Look ahead. Look ahead, we can see your ever. We're doing it, doing it together. Light it up, we can be a million stars. Look at that, women, see we've come so far, we've come so far. This is our world, this is our time, these are our plans, let our light shine. This is our place in the human race, and we won't stop dreaming, no we won't stop dreaming. This is our world, this is our time, these are our plans, let our light shine. This is our place in the human race, and we won't stop dreaming, no we won't stop dreaming. We won't stop dreaming. Excellent. Woo! That was so good. All right, second graders, you can all meet this way, okay?
Chef? Thank you very much, or parents, for bringing them out, the team from Virginia Avenue Charlotte de Hart, and the team, the support. I'm so proud of them, and it's for being here, and the families, thank you so much.
Yeah. I think I might...
Thank you so much, that was beautiful. Just refreshing to see what our students are doing in our division, and being able to connect with our community in this way is just really perfect. Thank you so much. I know, look at everyone, second to transition. If you guys want to move up, please go for it and do that. We're gonna bite. Someone add, no?
Yeah, so I switched.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, that ends us to item number three on our agenda this evening, where we have our
public comment. Madam Chair, do we have, Madam Clerk, I guess I'm talking myself, do you have anyone that have signed up this evening to make comments to the board? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board that did not have an opportunity to sign up on the sign-up sheet outside? All right, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, which is number four on our agenda this evening, we have on our consent agenda, approval of consent agenda items, the agenda, minutes, bills, facility usage, John Hanley High School tennis court project, and minor policy provisions. And we have a motion by Ms. Holman. We have a second by Mr. Birchmal. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Consent agenda adopted. Number five, we have here a future action item, which is our SRO MOU, which is Memorandum of Understanding, SRO report, and hopefully we have Chief Piper with us this evening that will make presentation. And Mr. Reagan.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the school board, I'm so excited to share with you tonight our first annual SO, our own report, to showcase how our two SROs interact with our students and staff, and also share a little bit about each event with the board, some personal details. And then Chief Piper will present statistics from this school year so far.
Thank you.
We will then enact the new school board policy change driven by code to have the board in concert with the Winchester Police Department affirm or amend the MOU between WPS and the WPD. This is a new requirement we will do every two years, and we will also seek public comment during the public review period. Okay, just a little background, I was surprised, doing this research, that I wasn't born then. So, the School Resource Officer Program goes back to the 1950s, but the program did get more prominence in number of SRO programs in the 1990s in response to school shootings such as Columbine. And Dr. Joyner, the historian, informed me that, it was 1998, I believe, that the first SRO was at John Hanley. And it says there also that definition that it's to provide law enforcement, security services. During the 30-some years that I've been from SRO programs, it's evolved to really be a vehicle to improve relations with police department and communities, and build relationships where kids have, see the SRO as a role model they can go to for help, assistance, et cetera. And certainly, they're there for law enforcement, but we like to see them in a teaching role, and also a mentor, et cetera. This is a partial text from KNAJ, which is our relations with law enforcement authorities. And you see at the bottom, that school board and law enforcement agency review and amend or affirm the memorandum, Memorandum of Understanding every two years, or if either party requested. And then our school board chair will provide notice to the public for input between this meeting and the next meeting, and then have, always have that conspicuously published on the division website. Okay, and now we'll turn the program over to Chief Piper, who's going to introduce our SROs, make some, any comments he would desire to do so, and then the statistics from this school year.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. Thank you for having me. I was excited when I walked in, I thought everybody was here to see me, but I am mistaken. So this evening I'm going to present a little bit about our School Resource Officer Program, but more importantly, I want to introduce you to our two School Resource Officers at the high school and the middle school and allow people here and at home to learn a little bit more about their School Resource Officers. I think unfortunately there is some narrative going on across the country in some jurisdictions where the SRO program has become a negative. And I can tell you in my almost 28 years of law enforcement experience and four years of being the chief here in Winchester, that that's not the case here in Winchester. Our school administrative leadership, the superintendent and his team and the police department have a fantastic working relationship and that goes down to the school level with my School Resource Officers. And I think you'll see later on in the PowerPoint here that there are very few, very few times where our law enforcement officers, our School Resource Officers actually have to make an arrest. There are dozens and dozens of times a week when our officers have positive interactions with the children in the school, sometimes steering them towards appropriate resources in conjunction with the school staff and sometimes bringing forward information that wouldn't have otherwise been brought forward, whether it's something happening at home with the child or something happening in the school environment. And of course, the primary reason our School Resource Officers are there is to avoid a tragedy like we've seen unfortunately too many times around this country. So with that, I will first bring, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from the police department perspective after we get done introducing the School Resource Officers and talking a little bit about the statistics in the last couple of school years. But with that, I will bring up Officer Sosa from John Hanley High School first and ask him to introduce himself and tell a little bit about why he came into law enforcement here in Winchester and why he had an interest in becoming a School Resource Officer.
Good afternoon, ladies, ladies gentlemen. I am Officer Sosa with the Winchester Police Department. I am the SRO at John Hanley High School. I was born in California and my family moved out here when I was six from California or Maryland. I attended Oak Mill High School and I had a good SRO that obviously, you know, is one of the many reasons I wanted to become an SRO and I think he was a great role model. I joined the United States Marine Corps after I was a mechanic Honda in Maryland and I ended up loving the Marine Corps, but I still wanted to fulfill my dream of becoming a police officer. My time had a great police department and I've been with the Winchester Police Department since 2018 and I feel like becoming an SRO, it's a great, you know, way of carrying on that role model that I once saw when I was a teenager.
Thank you, Mrs. Sosa.
Next I'll. Oh, I went too far. All right. Next I will introduce Officer Ray Rice from Daniel Morgan.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ray Rice. I'm School Resource Officer at Daniel Morgan. I also have Frederick Douglas and Virginia Avenue. So some of the kids that were up here, I've seen them every once in a while. I was born and raised in the upstate New York. I came down here to go to Shenandoah and also play lacrosse. That's what got me down here. I graduated from Shenandoah with a degree in pediatrics and a minor in coaching. After I completed lacrosse, I coached in several different age levels, always from college all the way down to youth. And that's where I decided where I grew my love for coaching and helping young people. After that, I just worked other jobs. Around 2017 is when I decided to become a Winchester Police Officer. I applied to other agencies, but I got stuck here. So, so after that, I've been here for about five years now. Then about two and a half years, about two years ago, we had an opening at Daniel Morgan. Everybody in the agency knew I wanted to become SRO, but I wanted a little more experience before I got that, but then the chief just kept knocking on my door saying, this is your shot, this is your chance. And I thought about it and I agreed with him. I said I would take the opportunity. I do love working at Daniel Morgan. I'm kind of upset about having a meeting here because I'm kind of missing the football game right now. But we were winning before I left, so that's really good. So I had to rush over here. But I do enjoy working at Daniel Morgan. I had every day's difference, just like working the road. It just keeps me on my toes. The kids have something new every day for me. Sometimes I wish they forget my name because I hear Officer Rice a lot walking through the building, but it's a good thing too. So I do enjoy it and I'll give it back to Chief.
All right. Thank you, Officer Rice. I'm glad you got stuck here and we hope you stick around.
That was sarcasm, I hope. So we included in the slide here, this is for you. I don't know if I read my glasses on. This is yours, right?
Yes.
So this is a letter that, you want to talk a little bit about it?
Uh, I don't know. Honestly, I don't know much about it. I was, we had our quarterly meet, quarterly meeting last week when I meet with the superintendent and Mr. Ray back there and we just go over the MOU every once in a while. And then when I came back the next day, I got a call from the fifth and sixth grade office saying they had something for me. Nobody really told me what it was, so I never know what it is. So I went down there and I had this note down there. Everybody can read it. But I didn't even know the student knew who I was, honestly, because I, we'd never had any interactions before this. But I made a point of seeking out Gemma and getting to know her a little bit more and I pulled her out one of, I think she was in math class actually when I pulled her out because I, it was, I got this note a little later on in the day. But just this, I, it kind of, I was kind of running around. My mind's a little crazy this day, but it kept drawing me back down to earth and let me realize how good of an impact I do have at the school. Thank you.
So I'll come back to that one. I do want to talk about some statistics while I'm up here and then I'll hand it back to the officers to talk a little bit about what their typical day is like, kind of situations where they do interact with students. So in your slide here, you see that we, every day our SROs have a positive interaction. I truly believe that. I pride our department in being very engaged with this community and I think the School Resource Officer is just another program where we can have positive interactions and hopefully build up that capital with the young people in our community. And I can tell you firsthand that when these officers are out in the community outside of the school environment, that really pays dividends. And when it comes to interactions, Officer Rice is, in particular, I've seen since he's been in the school a little bit longer, will come out during the summer and be able to diffuse a situation where a kid maybe is amped up or not very cooperative with law enforcement and he's a known face, he's a friendly face and that really helps diffuse those situations. You'll see so far this school year, relatively short period, that at Hanley High School, we've had seven police reports and there's a breakdown of the type of reports that we've dealt with so far and the Daniel Morgan campus, three. One weapon related incident the entire school year and that's really, I think last school year, of course, it was kind of an anomaly because of COVID, but last school year, I think we had two arrests in the school system. So this is something that unfortunately does not result in most children that interact with our officers being entered into the criminal justice system. That's kind of a last resort that we want collectively for the child, for the children to be entered into the criminal justice system. Rather, I think the interactions and the cooperative relationship that we have with our school administration partners often avoids children going into the criminal justice system. And we certainly, by the way of the MOU and by way of practice, defer to the school administrators primarily unless there's an immediate safety matter that needs to be addressed by our law enforcement officers. I'm going to ask the officers to come up here, Ray, if you want to come up and talk a little bit about what the typical day looks like from the beginning when drop off happens till the end of the day and what would be a typical interaction between the officers and the students that they're serving.
Okay, so my normal day begins with me. I usually sit at the bus with Daniel Morgan, so I see the kids every day when they get on off the bus. I try to get a read for how they are. This year's a little, this year they're slowly starting to get acclimated back to five days a week. They're, I'm not seeing as much lag out as I was seeing the first couple of weeks of kids hitting that wall around Wednesday. Now it's more back towards Friday like it was before COVID happened. After I do bus duty, now bus duty is a little bit longer than what it used to be. So now I'm usually getting in the building around 8:30 ish, depending on when our last bus gets there because we have several, we have a couple that are doing the double routes. So I'm getting there, walking in the building. I always say hi to kids when they get off, like this past week since we had our testing. I'm not sure what the test was called, but we had testing two days. We had math last Tuesday, we had Thursday, we had writing, reading. So I was, make sure I said good luck to all the kids if I saw them, make sure, then I did follow ups after they tested during lunchtime. But normally I try to walk the building. I try to get in at least 10,000 steps a day to make sure I'm seeing the whole campus. My interactions are from anywhere from the saying good morning to them. If I see a kid more on the five, six side outside the classroom, if they're not working on work, if seeing what, why they are, try to sit down, figure out what's going on. For the disciplinary reason, we try to talk it out. What happened? Why were we out there? What can we do better? How can we solve the situation so we're not losing class time? We're out here for disciplinary reasons. After that, some more walking around and lunchtime comes, I try to, right, I mainly stay on the seven, eight side for lunch because normally, because six lunches on the five, six side is a lot between recess and all that type of stuff. But I do get over there every once in a while and kids enjoy. I sit down and have, sit down and talk to them while they're having lunch. They do enjoy that on the five, six side. Seven, eight side, I'm just more helping, since we have so many kids moving around at that point, just helping administration try to help function that lunch a little, those three lunches a little bit more. We have our, we work, I work well with the administration. We all have our spots. We just make sure everybody's functioning throughout the building, throughout that lunchtime, get them in and out, try to get as much time to communicate with their friends and eat lunch at the same time, give them a little break from classroom. After that, it's just more walking around and just hanging out with the kids and trying to figure, trying to, if we do have any discipline, I try to let the administration handle it until it gets to a more, a very disruptive point and they ask me to step in. Then it's still more trying to diffuse the situation, trying to get the kid out of the classroom or if we have to, or move the other kids out of the classroom and handle the situation in the classroom. That's what we have to do. But then, other than that, I'm usually not, we really don't have any discipline because I work well with the administration. They, they know how to handle and they know when it's getting a little too much and they call me in to be a little backup, I guess. We really don't have, like I said, we really don't have many criminal incidents. We just, we work well together as a, we're a great team, even five, six, seven, eight. Even at the elementary schools, they call me down. We did have a little incident with cars passing buses. Virginia Avenue called me down and I'll go down there every, every couple of days, try to mix it up so the drivers don't get my pattern and make sure they're not passing the school buses when the other stop signs up.
Chief Piper, before we move on to Officer Sosa, would you mind if we just give the board an opportunity to ask questions to Officer Rice, just as it relates to the campus that he's on? So I just will go down the line just in case. Mr. Virchinal, any questions?
No questions. Appreciate you, man. Thank you.
Dr. Pierce Gonzalez? Ms. Holman?
One, thank you for your service at Daniel Morgan. Have you thought about potentially proposing that we have a lacrosse program?
We, we do have a, we have a club at Hanley. We have a club team at Hanley.
Okay. You're coaching?
No. Just the timing and everything. It's a, it's a little rougher now than what it was before.
I'll catch you at coffee next time.
Ms. Troopin? Mr. Wallace?
All right.
Ms. Crawford?
I do try to address that because when I first got there, they used to say, I'm scared of police officers. I tried to break that down and figure out why and then we work on that to try to rebuild the trust that I would like to have with all the students in the building.
That's awesome. Thank you. We do know that when you have rapport with someone, it's easier to connect and to talk and build that trust. So that definitely is essential in any relationship. So thank you for that. Okay. Chief Piper next. Thank you.
Are there any Hanley High School questions that Officer Sosa might be able to answer? If not, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Sure. So I'll open up the floor again for any questions for Chief Piper or Officer Sosa. Dr. Pierce Gonzalez?
Hi, Chief Piper. I was at the community event that you hosted there at the police department and Officer Rice was there. That was the first time that I got to meet him. And I, like many others that went to that event, I think we did have some serious concerns about police officers in our schools and I wanted to hear what the community felt. And it went really well, I feel anyway. Everybody there was given a chance to speak. We were offered the opportunity to actually interact with Officer Rice and I think most of us left there feeling a lot better about the SRO program. I would love to see that become like an annual thing if we could, maybe sometimes it's here at, you know, one of our buildings instead of at the police station. Invite our community to come out now that we have Mr. Officer Sosa onboard as well. It'd be great to, to get the community interacting with our officers. Yeah, that's, that's all I got.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. And that core group is what we've called that group, that community group, trying to educate people on what the police department does and why we do it, some of the different tools that we have and go over different actions, interactions that our community members may have with our officers. Of course, that was gaining some steam and then COVID kind of came back and we've had to put the pause on some of our in-person meetings, but I'm very much looking forward to doing those kind of things again, hopefully very soon.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Piper. Thank you for the SRO report. I will remind, Ms. Holman, you have another question?
I remember, I can't remember when, but I remember at one point the department was invested into the community policing and I think the goal was to have officers walk in the areas that they serve. Is that still going on? Because I don't, they're not as visible as they once were.
Absolutely. And I'll tell you some of the challenges and these are not excuses, these are just realities of the situation right now and that is staffing. And we, like many departments across the region and across the country, are struggling mightily to recruit and retain quality police officers. And so what I don't want to do is lower our standards for the people that serve our community. I want to be very particular about the types of people that we put out in the street here in Winchester. So I would say before COVID, we were making some significant progress of getting officers out in twos, on foot, not in an enforcement role, but just interacting with people, particularly in some of the more diverse areas of our city. And we're still trying to do that, but we are first and foremost call driven and right now that's taking up a lot of the time for the men and women in patrol. I think that the future is bright and that we do have some young, very engaged officers that are finishing up field training as well as hopefully going into the next academy that starts in January, so I think 2022, in the springtime, I think we'll have a lot more opportunity to do that.
And is there still an opportunity, I can't remember the name of the program. I know you've got Community COPS, Community, the COPS is a community policing program. Is there still an opportunity for students to participate? I think at one point there was a student driven program.
So we have a couple of different programs. First, we had our Citizens Academy, which is for adults to come in and learn more about their police department. And then we expanded that. We did a teen academy and then recently a youth academy, ages five to eight, I believe. And those were filling up immediately. We also have the Kids and COPS camp that we do in June every year. It's a week long camp that many of the officers here and elsewhere get involved in. COVID, you know, didn't, didn't really allow us to do that this past year. We're committed to continuing to do those as soon as we can.
Well, and I like Dr. Pierce Gonzalez's suggestion. Maybe the officers can participate in the back to school night that they have at the schools. I'm very appreciative of your efforts. They are noticed and they are noted and so I'm very appreciative of Winchester Police Department being a part of the community to help reduce the negative incidences that we see. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Chief Piper or the officers? All right. So policy KNAJ requires that Winchester Police Department and the Winchester Public Schools review the memorandum of understanding every two years and we've heard that already from Mr. Ray, and either amend or affirm the memorandum of understanding. Chief Piper, as the lead representative for the Winchester Police Department, have you reviewed the memorandum of understanding?
Yes.
Does the organization you represent wish to amend the memorandum of understanding?
No.
Thank you. Does the organization you represent wish to affirm the memorandum of understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional comments?
No, thank you for having us this evening.
All right, thank you. And now for Winchester School Board. Has everyone reviewed the memorandum of understanding? Yes? 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 Okay, thank you. Are there any other? Are there any other questions or discussion items regarding this? Ms. Holman?
Um, I noticed that our Memorandum of Understanding was executed in October 2020, prior to the Virginia Model, Virginia Model of Understanding, um, Virginia Model of the Memo of Understanding coming out. There are, there are some differences between the two documents, I don't want to kind of get into those, but I'm, I'm wondering whether or not the Division and, and, um, the department have had an opportunity to review that and contemplate the new model which came out, I think, a month after our MOU, uh, was executed.
I'll open the floor for Mr. Ray to respond to that question, thank you.
No, no, we have not, we can certainly do so.
I, I think it would be appropriate, particularly since there's been, um, you know, some, there were some legislative changes previously, and they've now adapted this model, I think that there are some things, um, in there, um, which are worthy of, of consideration as we look at, as we prepare this process to affirm the existing ones.
And I, I, if you can send that to me at our next quarterly meeting with the, um, uh, Police Department, we can review that, and, and, um, as it's stated in the, um, uh, policy, at any time we can come back and say, you know, we reviewed the model policy and we want to make the following amendments.
Thank you, all right. Is there a motion to affirm the Memorandum of Understanding between the Winchester Public Schools and the Winchester Police Department?
Yes, hang on, get in there.
Okay, I think I heard a motion.
Yeah. Uh, motion to affirm the Memorandum of Understanding between Winchester Public Schools and the Winchester Police Department.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Birch, and I think we have a second by Mr. Wallace.
Madam Chair, this is a future action item.
It is, um, but this is just to, to affirm the Memorandum. Okay, all in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Okay, one, I just want to make sure that we note, remember, we're not voting, we're just affirming to the future action of the MOU.
You're affirming to move it forward.
Right, to move forward.
So at the, after the public, um, after Marie makes some, the statement?
I'll make a comment about the open period for public comment, which will start today and go all the way through October 11th, which is two weeks. Then at that point, it will be brought back and then we will vote, but you can still hold your position, I just wanted to clarify that.
So, if, this is to affirm this or to send it out for public comment?
Kind of both, both. So we're affirming it, and then once we affirm it, if, if it, if it falls that way, then I will make a statement just letting the public know that this will be out for review so that they can provide their comments, questions, and that review period will be kind of open for two weeks and then it will be brought back forward to the board. Is that correct?
What would we, what would we be approving at that time then, in two weeks?
Well, then, no one on the board, somebody said, I, I don't, um, I want to, like if you said, I want to, um, amend it, and you made a motion to amend, then we would, um, take a vote and then we would, we would, it would be tabled until we would go back in, back to the drawing board. So you're just, you're just saying, we feel, we're on board to move forward, if the public comes back and makes comments that, you know, we have 300 comments that we don't like it, that would cause us to, um, huddle back up and revisit it. Um, and then if there is, um, no great amount of opposition, on the 11th, we say we had two comments, um, that were supportive, and we know that the board is, is, um, has consensus that we're, uh, in a position to affirm it, we then, um, you know, take it to, uh, uh, for the consent that we did, essentially, Marie would say, we're all, all who want to move it to consent, because we agreed upon it on the 27th, we got public feedback, there was no public feedback was, that was, um, substantial enough to say we need to go in another direction, and then we would just motion to go to, um, um, to consent.
Right, and this is as it relates to the content of the MOU. So if everyone, do you understand? You don't look like you understand.
Well, no, I, I, I completely support the program. I'm just saying the substance of the MOU, my position would be that I think we need to look at what has been adopted as the model MOU for the, for the Commonwealth.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, okay, so, I, I, just to be clear, so we had, how many of, we had, everyone, we had one, um, that did not affirm, that opposed, okay?
The motion was to affirm the current policy, so we're not changing anything.
Correct.
That's all.
Right, correct. And, um, Ms. Holman?
Okay, please.
Um, and the VSA pushed this forward, it's interesting, because they pushed this forward to add the piece about reviewing every two years. Um, in, in their communication, um, there was no, and I, there's communication, they, they provided no direction as to, um, looking at the model policy and considering review, and they just said, um, recommended you changing it to include the two-year review process.
Okay, so I think we're clear in terms of the vote, whether the, um, affirm or no. So motion carries as it stands, um, at this moment. Um, as, as the school board chair, I am providing notice of an opportunity for public input during the review period for the Memorandum of Understanding, which we discussed this evening, and it is, will be posted for your review on our website. The public review, review period will be established from September 27th, which is tonight, until October 11th, that's about two weeks. The Memorandum of Understanding will be posted on the Division webpage and will be available for public comments as well as this evening at our school board meeting. So it is available and accessible to our community, um, right now. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our next agenda item, we are on nu- number six, where we have reports and presentations. We've already had our Virginia Avenue showcase, and now we will move forward with the Virginia Avenue School Improvement Plan by, Dr. Bryant.
Good evening, once again, joining me at the podium, I have Wendy Perkins, who is our Assistant Principal, and Ashlyn Walther, who is an administrative intern and a teacher at Virginia Avenue. They help and will provide leadership for, for implementing this plan throughout the year, along with Sam Gates, who's also an administrative intern at Virginia Avenue this year, as well as our instructional coach. Thank you for the opportunity to share our school improvement plan. The school improvement plan is a living document, so as we get new data, the plan changes. Uh, and as we meet month to month and in our PLC meetings and we look at how the students are doing, um, there could be revisions. But this is the plan, uh, as it stands this evening, and that has been published on the, on our website. This, this quote here, you know, if we don't do this, we, we haven't done anything important, right? So if we can't make connections with children and help them believe that we, we believe in them, and, uh, that they can, and help them become the best they can possibly be, then we haven't done anything of significance. So that sort of guides our work, being champions for children. This is just a review of the possible accredited, uh, accreditation ratings. Um, we are proud to be an accredited school based on our scores in nineteen, or eighteen, nineteen. Uh, and so, uh, we hope to remain that way. So the school improvement plan has overall goals, and then it has some SMART goals within it. And our overall goals are in reading, math, and then the school environment. We hope that by the end of, uh, fourth grade this year, seventy-five percent, I can't, I'm having trouble reading that from here. Seventy-five percent of our students will be, uh, or higher, will be reading on grade level, um, as measured by their, um, performance on the SOL assessment. Uh, and we hope that in math, um, that we have a pass rate of sixty percent or higher, and that our school environment will be characterized as a positive learning environment for all, as measured by our panorama data. So within the school improvement plan, there are two strands, teaching for learning and school environment. Teaching for learning is the strand one, and here, this is directly from the VDOE website, uh, school quality performance indicators, and you can see, uh, based on our scores back in eighteen, nineteen, we were all in the green. Um, our reading performance for students from, so we're comparing here our performance in eighteen, nineteen, the last year we had sort of a normal year, and then this past year. And we, uh, just make a comment on each of these slides that these scores are not, in, in our opinion, they're, we didn't, can't look at the scores from the past years the same way that we do the scores from the year, from the eighteen, nineteen. However, they are important to study, we can see how we did compared to the state in terms of maintaining or dropping, um, and we can see really what our challenges are. Those were our overall reading scores, these were, this was our performance in our black subgroup. We did fall significantly in the black subgroup, we're very aware of that. Reading, uh, students with disabilities, we also fell significantly. Uh, overall math performance was a drop. And for our black subgroup, and for our students with disabilities, and also, as I said, this is a living document, when, when we shared this with the staff, um, it also fell significantly with our Hispanic subgroup, so we added a goal, a SMART goal for Hispanic subgroup, even though I don't have their scores up here. So these are our English Language Arts SMART goals. Um, so it begins in first grade, right, that's the year where students really put it all together and start to read running text. And so by, if, if they have a good first grade year, then we feel, in, in terms of meeting grade level standards, then we feel they're set for success. So by June of 2022, we, uh, our goal is that the percentage of students meeting the PALS benchmark in first grade will increase from forty-six percent in the spring of 2021 to sixty percent or higher in the spring of 2022. And, um, we, our goal for the African-American students is that, uh, by June, that, um, will increase from forty-two percent to fifty-seven percent. Now we could say the standard is increased by ten percent, uh, and then you, you met that benchmark, so, but, forty-two plus ten percent, that's about forty-six, a little over forty-six percent. We don't think that's good enough, so we've set a higher goal than that, we, we've set like fifteen percent, uh, improvement goals uh, for each of our subgroups. So in June of 2022, our third English Language Arts SMART, SMART goal is that the percentage of students with disabilities passing the SOL test will increase from twenty-seven percent to a minimum of forty-two percent. The school improvement template calls for us to have, um, these four components, best practices, uh, delineate who's responsible, delineate a timeframe, and determine right from the start how we're going to evaluate our access, what evidence, what evidence are we going to use? Well, we have a lot of good structures in place in Winchester Public Schools. We have PLC meetings, we have instructional coaching, we have, now we have MTSS, so you will see those, um, best practices um, repeating throughout our action plan. We also have PBIS. So each of those components help us to move towards our goals. In mathematics, our SMART goals, uh, again, we're, we want to look at our African-American subgroup and our sped subgroup, but as I mentioned earlier, we're going to add the Hispanic subgroup. The Hispanic subgroup dropped more in math than in reading in this year's SOL testing, so that's why we selected math as an area of focus. But the thing is, with math, there's a lot of vocabulary, and so if our ESOL teachers are integrating that vocabulary into their lessons, as well as our regular education teachers, then we also are helping them with English, and we believe overall with their reading scores. And you will see a similar action plan on this slide. Uh, we do have a nice, uh, partnership with, um, let me leave this here for a minute, with the participate organization, which helps us not only to recruit and hire our teachers for our dual-language program, but they also provide ongoing support for our, um, curriculum development, and they, they come and they observe our dual-language teachers, and our dual-language teachers are, are being very intent this year in, in teaching, uh, helping to teach math vocabulary when they're teaching Spanish. So, um, I added that to, uh, our best practices, or we did as a team. School environment, we, we had a lot of positives, we had a lot of glows, as Mr. Ray would call them. We had some really nice improvements here, for example, staff leadership relationships went up twenty-eight points, we're really proud of that. Um, and then just the overall feeling about school leadership. Um, the one area that we saw as sort of something that, um, needed improvement was feelings about coaching and feedback, and this was particularly from our, um, our teaching assistants, our paraprofessionals. So we wanted to, um, target that as an area of improvement. We want teachers and staff to feel good about the feedback that they receive and the coaching. So one strategy we're going to implement, for example, this year, is to provide monthly professional development for our teaching, teaching assistants, um, bu- by our, our instructional coach and our, um, admin intern, and then other teachers have volunteered to help provide this tea, this, we're going to pull them out for about thirty minutes once a month, just to provide targeted PD for them. We also look at our SWISS data to help determine our, um, school environment SMART goals. The beginning of this year, the first month of the year, we, we really didn't want to compare last year's data and, and make a goal on that, because it just wasn't a normal year, we only, you know, had two, about two-thirds of the kids attending most of the year, and, and a lot of them, not every day, so, well, none of them every day, but a lot of them not four days a week. So, um, we're, we, we set a goal, uh, for the risk ratio, based on the first month's referral of this year, because it was a more normal time period. Um, so that, that's what that was about. Um, and we, we're hoping that the risk factor for major referrals for the black subgroup will decrease from three-point-two-three at the beginning of this year to one-point-seven-three. And that is our action plan, um, our PBIS team meets once a month, um, to look at the data and determine responses to that. We also are excited that the MTSS, um, process will include support for behavior. So that is our school improvement plan in a nutshell. Uh, if you have questions, we do encourage you to email us, to ask us now, um, or to stop by and, and have a chat.
Thank you.
If you have any questions for us.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant, I'll open the floor for any questions or comments for Dr. Bryant and her team. Mr. Birch, and, Dr. Pierce Gonzalez, Ms. Holman?
Dr. Bryant, how is the risk factor for referrals calculated? Or the risk, you use terms risk ratio and, um, the goal speaks to the risk factor.
Right, it, it comes from the SWISS data, and it comes right out of that, that is determined, but I'm, so, I probably wouldn't be the one to explain the mathematics, I'm going to let Ms. Perkins.
Yeah, so basically the risk factor or the risk ratio, um, looks at the number of students in the student body, and then the number of referrals coming in, and it shows you, if you are, for example, African-American, what is your risk of, um, being referred into the SWISS system, um, as, for a discipline infraction? Um, so it can break it down into subgroups.
So an African-American student is three point two-three percent times more likely to be referred?
Correct.
What is a major referral?
That's the risk factor. Yes.
But what is, what is a major referral?
Major referral would be something that requires an administrator, administrative action, or any sort of discipline. It could be from lunch detention to, you know, suspension from school, half-day, leaving early due to behavior infractions. So it's, it's really those major infractions where an administrator has to be called in, and not just typical classroom, classroom sorts of disruptions.
More like if a student tears up a room, throws things, is involved in a fight. But just to, to explain risk factor a little bit more, it should, everyone should be at one, if it's even, okay? So if it's way off. And now, you could have one student who throws it way off just because that one student has been referred, because she or he may be going through a really tough time in their lives, and they're, they're coming to school and having, and maybe acting out, and may have like twenty referrals just because of all the trauma and.
Yeah, so when I see this, those are the things I start to wonder about. Are, you know, what is the, you know, the source? You know, it comes from, from the data, but is there something under there? I mean, is this like one, is it one student? Is it a handful of students throwing it off? Or are we seeing elevated referrals from teachers for major issues?
For the first month of school, it was. It is one student who's having a really, really tough time, and she's very young, so.
And this is, and this was, what were our numbers in nineteen?
For the risk factor?
Yes.
I, I don't know. I would have to go back and look those up.
Because I, I don't know, I can't kind of put this in context to understand. This is the goal, but where were we? And how much of a, how much of an increase-decrease is it?
Right. I can find that, I can look that up and send it to the board.
The question I have was, the EL SOL goal, and these are just the students required to test? Because I know that they're, that not all ELs are required to test.
Right. But you want to be careful about what year you exempt them from testing. But yes, just the ones required to test. But most of them are.
Okay.
Ms. Holman, are you referring to the recently, the recently arrived students?
Well, yeah, I know that some students, I mean, they're exempted from testing for a, I never remember if it's two years or three years initially, correct?
You're talking about newcomers who know, know English, basically. They arrive, and then the test comes up very quickly. Yes.
And that's all I have now. I may send you that with some others.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Any other questions or comments or points needing clarification? Ms. Crawford?
My question is concerning reading and comprehension. If a student went into the second grade, and they have, have not acquired the basics in the first grade reading, what is the process? Do they get a tutor? Is there, what would be?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We have several processes in place for, so the student might be served by one of our two reading specialists. It depends on the student. The student may qualify for services from a resource teacher, like a special education teacher or an ESOL teacher. We also have the MTSS process now, where students can be referred for intervention. And we have our MTSS coach, who can provide direct services to children. And we also have RTI in place in our school. So we have someone who also provides intervention through that program. Also, teachers provide interventions. We do, we have small group instruction that's a major component. We have guided reading in our reading classes. So teachers differentiate depending on the student's current specific reading levels. And comprehension is often, especially as they get older, they, students learn to read the words, but they can't, they're not comprehending well. So through our assessments, teachers determine what the specific needs are and then differentiate during their small group instruction. And maybe Ms. Walter would like to speak to that a little bit as a, as a classroom teacher.
I know one of the things that I do in my classroom, in addition to, you know, keeping anecdotal notes, formative assessments, we, you know, we do running records weekly, if not daily, with different students. So that is just looking at their word count and saying, are they able to keep a good time to where the, the amount of time that they're reading is not affecting their comprehension? Were they fluent as a reader? Were they, you know, comprehending what they read? And after we read with every student, and we always ask those questions, trying to incorporate writing into each guided reading session in some way, trying to incorporate vocabulary because we know that word parts, and especially for our ELL learners, our EL learners, there are lots of pieces of the English language that are more difficult. For example, homophones. There are homophones in the English language, but in the Spanish language, those aren't present. So there are lots of different pieces to that. But as a classroom teacher, guided reading, formative assessments, keeping those notes, testing students on what we are teaching as a grade level standard, but on their independent reading level or instructional reading level. You know, in any given year, we might have students one grade level below, potentially two grade levels below, but they still need to be tested on the fourth grade standards at the end of the year. So teaching them what they need to know, but at a level that's accessible to them. And, you know, there are lots of different teachers in the building, like our MTSS specialist, our RTI interventionist, our instructional coach, Sam Gates. She's very wonderful at providing support for teachers, and our administration providing support for teachers and different strategies. You know, we, we are willing to do whatever it takes for our kids. And in a lot of ways, that's layering support. Not just what we give, but the additional instructions and any additional instruction that we can give them.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. I think that was, at least I understood it, and I think that was a good question. Thank you, Ms. Hol for asking. All right. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Bryant and her team? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now that moves us, we're still on Agenda Item Number Six. We are now on Item B, under Reports and Presentations. And of course, Dr. Van Heeklim isn't here this evening, but we do have Dr. Joyner that will lead us in this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. You were called last meeting. We provided for you an outline, a rubric, if you will, on this topic, giving you the types of decisions that you might have, in which you might have to engage. Staff at that time was not prepared to make, did not make a recommendation, but just to give you the context for what is it that we might have to consider as you work through this, through this topic this evening, presenting you some further content to hopefully aid in your discussion and deliberation. You have three documents attached this evening. And once again, staff is not making a recommendation this evening and not really prepared to answer specific questions, but certainly in general, we can. Three documents you have outline for you, there are twelve school divisions in the state currently that have moved forward with either, with policy or indicated where they're, they're heading. Either they've made a decision about vaccination or testing and/or a combination of both. And what we have for you is a summary of the forward-facing documents in that regard. And as you go through here, you're going to see these are a little all over the place. Some boards have adopted resolutions, and you have a copy of the resolution. Others have simply made a press release indicating they're making a decision. Virtually none of these have forward-facing procedures or protocols. They all say they're, the board has directed that they be developed, they'll come out at a later time. So the first document is a summary. It gives you a brief description of what occurred in each of these divisions. And then they're all hyper-length, and that will take you directly to whatever the forward-facing or public document is. If you don't like to click to read there, the other document are the announcements or the resolutions. You can just read through that document straight through, if you prefer that. Then the third shows you three divisions that have made decisions about athletes and requiring vaccination for athletes. So those are your resources. Hopefully, they'll give you some good context of what's going on within the state and help you in your discussion. And again, we're not making recommendations this evening. That's just to aid in, in your discussion. And I believe also, Madam Chair, that Dr. Van Heeklim, I think, left a statement in this regard.
He did. And if, if you don't mind, I will, since Dr. Van Heeklim could not be here this evening, he did want to provide the board with his statement. So I will read that on his behalf. It says, "Tonight, I am asking each board member to consider their level of support for vaccine requirement for all staff and athletes. We have provided several examples from other school divisions in the Commonwealth for you to review prior to tonight's meeting. If the consensus tonight from the board is to direct Winchester Public Schools' leadership to develop a vaccination requirement for staff and athletes, I will recommend that you adopt that requirement in October. I am personally in support of this requirement for both staff and athletes. Our recommendation will include input from staff and families via survey data, along with variations that may be implemented, such as a testing requirement, religious exemptions, et cetera. In respect to staff, while eighty percent of our forward-facing staff have been vaccinated, the remaining twenty percent, when required to quarantine, do present an operational hardship on schools and limit our ability to keep schools open." I lost my place. Where am I? I'm sorry. Okay. "In addition, it is likely that Virginia will institute a vaccine mandate for public school employees as early as January twenty twenty-two. In respect to athletes, while we have had a very successful fall season in terms of COVID, the winter season moves indoors and increases COVID-related exposures. With a fully vaccinated team, the season and games will continue, even if one player tests positive for COVID. However, if one player tests positive for COVID without a vaccine mandate, an entire team may have to quarantine and forfeit games and matches. In summary, the purpose of tonight is an opportunity for the board to have an open discussion and give direction to the superintendent regarding a recommendation for a policy." Okay, so at this time, I will open up the floor and go around and just kind of gauge where each board member is in terms of if they would, at this point, consider or be in favor of a recommendation from our leadership and Dr. Van Heeklim in way of some kind of vaccination policy, regulation, or, you know, whatever they recommend. So I'll start with Mr. Bertscheloff.
I get to go first. That's awesome. I'd like to see the recommendation, see what Jason presents, but honestly, I feel like if you're not getting a shot now, you're, you're being selfish. And I'm, I'm for that.
Okay, thank you. So we have a yes, so you would be in favor of them bringing forward a recommendation for the board?
I would, I'd love to see a recommendation.
Okay, awesome. Thank, thank you. Dr. Pierce Gonzalez?
I too would like to see a recommendation for both staff and faculty brought in front of the board.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Holman?
I'd like to see a recommendation as well for staff, all, and also for athletes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Holman. Ms. Truvin?
I've been that quiet tonight that I actually had to move my microphone. I just want to make sure I understand, but what you're asking tonight is, do we want the superintendent to come back to us with what he would recommend, correct? Not saying we would vote in whatever particular way based on that recommendation? Absolutely. Okay, I just want to make sure too, the public is clear on that. You know, I think we've been very diligent and thoughtful in our approach, you know, over the last year and a half, unfortunately, now almost approaching two years. So I think it's really important that the superintendent and leadership team has an opportunity to, to dig in and bring forth what they recommend and believe is best for the community. And then that's up to each individual board member to look at that information and decide what he or she believes, if that is the best recommendation for the school community or whether it's not. So I'm certainly in support of that. As always, I would just want to make sure we have some data. I know we've talked at our last work session about teacher and staff vaccination status, if at all possible. I think it would be very beneficial if we had more current data because we were missing a large swath of our new employees, if I remember correctly. Because I think that would really help frame it. But to a similar end, we really haven't spent any time talking yet about our athletes for this school year. Last year certainly was a very difficult time working through that process. So I don't recall what the numbers were, but I thought they were very, very high for the percentage of students that participated in a, in a winter sport. I wanted to say upwards of forty, fifty percent. But that kind of data that we're anticipating how many students, a reminder to the board of what the various winter sports are, what's that going to look like for spring? Just really helping us get under the hood and so that we can make the best decision possible with the information that we have at that time. I would ask if that's not terrible trouble. And I would also really want to understand the medical exemption process, what that entails, what a student or faculty member would have to present in order to be provided with a medical waiver, and same for religious exemption. Thank you. I'm sorry to ask for a lot of things, but I know it's hard, it would be hard for me to make a decision without that information.
Sure. And, and that's, and I think that's good. And remember, this is just, you know, us giving, us saying that we want the superintendent to bring to the board a recommendation for any kind of vaccination requirements for staff and athletes. So this is just us trying to gauge who's in favor of that. You know, that's the first step. But Ms. Truvin, your points are noted, and Dr. Joyner, I know you're on it. Okay. Okay. Mr. Wallace?
I'm, I'm in favor with the recommendation. I was a little hesitant, need more information, so I'm in favor of moving forward with it. I'll just, as, once it comes out, I can ask my questions then, so I'm fine for that.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. And Ms. Crawford?
With the surge of the Delta variant, which has put more children at risk, I'm recommending to move forward with the recommendation.
So you are in favor of Dr. Joyner, Dr. Van Heeklim and his team bringing forward to the board a recommendation for vaccinating, vaccination requirements for students and athletes and staff? Well, not students, staff and athletes. Okay, thank you. I think that's all of us. I also am, am in support of that. And so, Dr. Joyner, so I guess at our October business meeting, you guys will bring forward to the board a recommendation, and then we'll go from there. All right, thank you. And last item we have, under our Reports and Represent, and Presentations, is our construction report by Mr. Smith.
I got it down to forty-five minutes. Hang in there. So, good evening. I do have a brief update this, this evening regarding the conversion of the Douglas School. Progress does continue, albeit at a slower pace. I think I mentioned before, we had a vendor that had a COVID breakout and had to quarantine several members of their team. So we lost some time there a little bit. They are all back on the site now, and our utilities are still being installed. I've provided some, let's see if I can get this. Provided some, I've got some data in here about the costs and stuff, but I've got some photographs of some of the work that's being done currently. We're in the process of completing the stormwater management ponds in the, on the, on the property. We are, again, I mentioned running utilities. And then the last two pictures are drilling into the rock that's under.
that's underneath the building to make sure that it's sturdy enough or it goes deep enough to hold up the new building that's going to go next to that one. So, so we're working through some of that. We're, we're working with the subcontractors, answering all their questions. They, they issue RFIs, which are requests for information regarding different types of materials and that type of stuff. So we're getting back to them with answers on that as they continue to price out different parts of their work and, and fix anything that we, that we may, may need. Right now, they've set the substantial completion date, July 15th, 2022.
Awesome.
Oh, no, no. I think there's a big asterisk attached to that date. My, my car has been in the auto shop for six weeks waiting on a part, right? And so again, keep swapping back and forth on the, on the vehicle with the wife. But the, we've ordered equipment. I mean, you can, you can think about my, my department's ordered a number of pieces of equipment back in July, August timeframe that are not going to be here until December. That we're waiting on pieces and parts. And so, so I would, I would take that July 15th with a grain of salt. We had a little discussion about it this morning in, in cabinet about how we may be able to get in there in the fall, anticipating that it may take longer than July 15th. But they have set that, that date and they're going to do their best to get to it. But again, unexpected delays are kind of expected at this point, to be honest. I think that's all I've got. Yep. Any questions about what we're doing out, out on the site?
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Mr. Bertscheloff? Dr. Pierce Gonzalez?
I assume by your presentation, Mr. Smith, that there's no new surprises that we've uncovered usually include those in these types of presentations?
No. Not, not at this time. Nope.
Excellent.
Yep.
Ms. Holman?
Yes, me again. Do we have any clauses in our agreement for liquidated damages for late deliveries? Since they're the ones giving us the delivery date?
I need to go back and check and see what, in order to answer that clearly, I would need to go back and look at our documents as to what's in that.
Are there any categories of equipment that we could reasonably expect may be delayed that we can get a jump on like we did with the steel package?
I'm more concerned with, with making, with our, our sub, with the subcontractors, getting the equipment that they need to get on site, having the people and the resources that they need to be on site, having no slowdowns from COVID. So it wasn't necessarily just equipment. It was a matter of everything that's, that's impacted by COVID. And so that's why I, I believe that July 15th is very, it's going to come a lot faster than we think. Again, they provided us with that date. We accepted it. And so they are going to continue to work towards that date. I don't want to stand up here and say that they're not going to make it for sure. I just want you to understand that it's not just one piece of equipment. It can be anything that can impact it. But if it's, if it's COVID-related, then that's, that's the biggest problem that we have in, in getting the building done.
If it's truly COVID-related, I would think that the force majeure clause is going to cover that. But if it's just lack of planning on their part, you know, I would hope that we have liquidated damage.
No, no, they have been working, they've diligently been working with us and trying to get, as you know, because I brought stuff to you, to try and get stuff ahead, ahead of schedule, to get things moving and continue to move on, on the project. So I anticipate that they will continue to do that. I can't be specific about where they may need to do that at this time, but that's my hope.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Truvin? Mr. Wallace? Ms. Crawford? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith? Okay, that does end our public portion of our business meeting this evening. Ms. Holman, I do believe we have need for closed session, please.
Pursuant to section 2.2, JAS 3711 A1 of the Code of Virginia, motion of the board convening closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, including prospective candidates for employment and the assignment appointment promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees, specifically substitute teachers and support staff, coaching stipends, club and activity stipends, administrative stipends and musical stipends.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Holman. A second by Dr. Pierce Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are now in closed session. Thank you.